It is six thirty-one. We will bring this Landale City Council meeting to order along with the Landale Redevelopment Successor Agency meeting to order. I'm going to ask the Secretary and City Clerk to give us the roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Reed. Councilmember Osborne.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Mayor Pollan Miles.
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The next item on our agenda is going to be our flag salute and a word of inspiration. Going to ask Councilmember Pat Kearney to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. We're going to add Pastor Eddie Vargas to lead us in a word of inspiration from the House of Restoration Church.
Let's your right hand over your heart and repeat along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could just maybe just bow our heads and close our eyes as a city, as a community, we also lift up those that have been tragically and maliciously attacked in Sutherland Springs. I know that the city of Landale, the people of Landale, the government of Landale, and the church in Landale, we pray for Texas and we pray for those that have been affected by this evil that has taken place. And so we just want to lift them up as well as our own city and our own community. Heavenly Father, we do thank you as we come before you today. Lord, we come together in one mind, in one accord, in humility, knowing that you are the author and the finisher of our faith. Lord, today we just lift up the people in Sutherland, Texas, God, for all the families that have experienced just this hardache and the brokenness of the senseless evil that's taking place. Lord, we pray that you bring peace and restoration and healing to all those families that were affected by this tragedy. And, Lord, today we lift up our community. We lift up our government. We pray for wisdom and discernment. We pray for integrity and character in its leadership. And we pray for humility in the residents of Landale. We pray, God, that as a people here, that we continue to thrive together. And, Lord, we just thank you for your hand of protection over everyone in our city, that you continue to bless our city as you have. We just thank you for this and we pray and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, for those words of inspiration. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're going to deviate from the agenda for just slightly here for a moment. We have tonight joining us, as you do from time to time, our Senator for our district representing us, representing us in Sacramento. Everyone's pretty much familiar. He was our Assembly Member in this area. For now, he's our Senator. We're going to bring him up to say a few words and to give us a little update on how things are going in Sacramento. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome to honor of Stephen Bradford.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. And I want to thank you for affording me this opportunity. And I apologize for not having this agendaized. I was not supposed to be in town tonight. And when I realized I was going to be in town, I said, "What better place to be than Landale?" And give you a brief legislative update. I hope to be no more than three minutes. For many of you might not be aware, our legislative year ended on September fifteenth. And from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, the Governor had thirty days to sign or veto all bills that were introduced. That period has passed, so the legislative year is over. And for many that don't know, our legislative year is from January to the second week in September. And it's a two-year cycle, so we're in the first year of a two-year legislative cycle. So we just completed this first year. I was honored to introduce twenty-one bills. Of those twenty-one, fourteen reached the Governor's desk and eleven earned his signature. Well, all fourteen earned his signature. Eleven was passed, three were vetoed. But it was a good year for us. But more importantly, what we did for California. And I know many of your residents and residents throughout the state of California have expressed their concern about last Wednesday, the first day of November. We passed a gas tax in the state of California in April. And starting last week, gas went up to twelve cent a gallon. And it's not a single person, whether you're on a local, state, or federal level, runs for office with intent on raising taxes. But we did so because our roads were in such dire need of repair in the state of California. We have kicked the can down the road for twenty-five years, so we had over four hundred roads and bridges in dire need of repair. So we are now charging additional twelve cent a gallon. That's going to raise five billion dollars a year for road infrastructure. Every city will get a chunk of that money, as well as competitive grants. And even though the promise of thousands of jobs, that wasn't enough to get me to yes. In order for me to get to yes, I asked the Governor for a few things. I asked the Governor for a diversity clause in the legislation to make sure that women-owned, minority-owned, and disabled-veteran-owned businesses have a piece of this pie. Again, five billion dollars a year. The Governor's commitment was so strong, he came down to the District, the Thirty-Fifth Senate District, back in June at Cal State Dominguez Hills and met with two hundred and fifty local businesses, again, women-owned, minority-owned, and disabled-veteran-owned businesses. And he made the commitment with the Transportation Secretary and the Director of Caltrans that this project and these projects will be as diverse. And I want people to understand, there are billions of dollars of contract opportunities for small businesses, whether you're a trucking firm, an engineering firm, if you do real estate. All of that comes into play when you're improving your roads or inquiring new roads and thoroughfare. So that was one of the biggest ones. Second one was the housing bond. We passed a housing bond on the last night of legislative session. We know there's a crisis in California for affordable housing. Part of that language states that we will set aside, if a developer comes to a community and wants to, say, build a hundred units at market rate, a certain percentage of those have to be below market for families. Because we have to change the stigma of low income or affordable housing. If you make a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in San Francisco, you're considered needing affordable housing. So it's harder and harder to find homeownership, let alone rent prices. So I think this is going to be a good piece of legislation. And third, the park bond. Landale has plenty of parks in this city, as well as the South Bay. We passed a park bond where every city at the passage of this next year will receive two hundred thousand dollars to improve and maintain your parks, as well as competitive grants as well to do the infrastructure in your parks and recreational areas. So that was very, very quick, thirty-five thousand square foot overview of the legislative year. Many feel it was probably the most aggressive in not only California state history, but also in the nation as to things that we tackled this year. So I'm honored to be here and as I've done, and as your Assemblyperson, just provide a quick legislative update. And if you wanted a question, I'd be more than happy to answer one.
I do. Thank you, Senator, for that update of Sacramento. Any questions of the Senator?
Steve, thanks for coming down, Steve. I'm glad you spoke about that, about the gas tax, because I have heard from, I don't think I can count a single person that's happy with it.
Nobody is.
Right. And it's not just the initial twelve cents, but the oncoming additional increases we've heard about. But one of the concerns, you know, I was down at a SCAG meeting last Thursday in downtown L.A., and a number of other electeds from across the region were all Southern California, of course. And they were concerned about, there are fears that a bulk of this money will be more spent in the northern part of the state than the southern part of the state. So I would ask you and other legislators from the Southland, what are you going to do to ensure that what we put into this, as far as the taxes collected, come back to us rather than end up there?
And that was one of the assurances that we all asked for. And it's in there. This is, this piece of legislation is very specific that all cities will participate. Local county will get their share of money, as well as the competitive grants that are going to be available throughout the state of California. But every city will get an allocation of money to maintain their roads. And it's in the millions of dollars that cities will receive. And we are all watching, because it took a lot of, you know, negotiations to get to yes. I mean, it wasn't quick, and it's even costed one of our colleagues a recall election because they voted for it. So this was not an easy vote. And I don't, I don't state that lightly. It was a tough decision for a lot of folks, including me. But again, the provisions that I got from the Governor, and I think his commitment by coming down here shows that he wants to make sure that small businesses take advantage of this as well and able to take advantage of this.
And one other quick follow-up. As you know, when redevelopment went away, that was the one tool that we had here in Landale to do things like our business improvements, or a lot of business frontages, took advantage of the ability through redevelopment, our new community center and so forth. Now, I've heard this said by some in the league of California cities, that about fifty percent of the capabilities of what once existed when redevelopment was in place still are in place. But that other fifty percent, from Landale's standpoint, I believe were the most important things we had, those tools to improve business districts and so forth. Anything new in the legislative front? I know the Governor is the one that wanted to, you know, take the money in the first place.
And as an individual who's been elected for twenty years, I don't have many regrets. But I have said this since the day I took that vote. That's probably one of the biggest regrets I have. And it was only two members of a hundred and twenty-minute member legislature that had the courage to say no to redevelopment. That's your former Senator, Senator Rod Wright, and Senator Bob Huff from the Brea, Orange County area. Those are the only two that said no, because it was a promise of billions of dollars that would come back to the state. That promise has not been met. And when you drive down your street and you see the number of homeless people out on the streets today, part of doing away with redevelopment is part of that problem. Because again, developers no longer have that incentive and that aid to write down dirt, to build, whether it's rental units or for-sale units, below market rate. And that tool was a great assistance for cities like Landale that use it right. Now, were there bad afters? Yes, they were. But not enough that we dismantled. And we always said amend it, don't end it. But we wound up ending redevelopment. So there are successor agents, as you well know, and it's legislation that's been introduced every year. Part of why the housing bond was so successful when the Governor was on board, because he realizes it's a lot of fixes, and we all do as legislators, that we're trying to do with these housing initiatives that have been introduced for the last five years. So this was a major package, and inclusionary housing was part of it. That was my language, again, to say that if a developer comes in and wants to do a certain number of units, it's not a percentage, but he makes the commitment that I will put some below market rate. So we're trying to aid in that, and business development districts and transit-oriented development was part of that as well.
You know, I know it's impossible to predict the future, but, you know, the Brown administration is term is coming to an end. And do you foresee the possibility with a new administration of any new legislation getting passed to bring back some of those components of redevelopment?
Well, again, a lot of it, I shouldn't say a lot, but many were in the housing bond. And I see that every year. We chip away at restoring what we took away. So no, it's, we've seen the error of our, of that vote and the promise of billions of dollars didn't come. Luckily, we balanced the budget with other means. But yeah, the promise that we thought would come from eliminating redevelopment never saw fit. I mean, the Forum now in Inglewood, it's surviving because it too had twenty-five million that we were able to save at the last minute through the successor agency to finish the remodeling of the Forum now. So we see how important redevelopment was for a lot of projects and a lot of communities.
Okay. Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions of the Senator Bradford?
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
We want to thank you, Senator, for all your advocacy. I mean, he's one of the hardest members in the legislature. And I'm not just saying that because he's before me, but I just happen to work as a staffer in the State Assembly for the past twenty years. And I tell you, you know those who are putting in the work versus those who kind of show up for work. And Mr. Bradford, our Senator, is really putting in the work for his district, not just for the city of Landale, but we're particularly concerned about Landale, but his whole district. And I just want to thank you for all your hard work and your advocacy in Sacramento.
Likewise, Mr. Mayor. And as all of you know, I started on local government, and I tell everybody, the hardest job is local government. What we do in Sacramento and what the craziness you see in Washington, I mean, it's not easy, but here's where the rubber meets the road. Here's where you have to address constituent concerns and find out ways to make it work. And we can do it from afar, so thank you.
And we'll put you down as one of our supporters for these competitive grants when we.
Without a doubt, without a doubt. I want to make sure everybody in Thirty-Fifth, every city, gets something out of this, for sure.
Yes, sir. Thanks, sir. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move our agenda along tonight. We have three present. Yeah, yes. Thank you. That's in order. Yes. We have three presentations tonight. And the presentation, the first presentation we're going to make tonight is World Polio Day by the South Bay, excuse me, the Rotary Club, make sure I get the right one. Rotary International. Let's see if this thing, it was on a second ago. There it go. Rotary International. Okay, and we've got a couple of Rotary members here today. Wave your hands. All right, and we'll bring you guys up in just a second here. Okay, Rotary International, World Polio Day, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen. With over one point two million Rotary Club members worldwide, Rotary International is one of the largest nonprofit organizations. In nineteen eighty-five, the Rotary launched Polio Plus and led efforts with the World Health Organization and the U.S. Center for Disease Control and Prevention and UNICEF to immunize the children of the world against polio. Since nineteen eighty-eight, polio cases have dropped by ninety-nine point nine percent. Wow. The world stands on the threshold of eradicating this disease. Rotary International continued to dedicate money and countless volunteer efforts worldwide with approximately sixty-two clubs and twenty-five hundred Rotarians in the Los Angeles County District, actively supporting and sponsoring service projects and addressing crucial issues such as poverty, health, hunger, literacy, and the environment in our local communities and abroad. Now, therefore, the city of Landale and the city, okay, this always gets me, the City Council of the city of Landale, California, who by proclaim October twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, as World Polio Day, and encourage all the citizens to join the city and Rotary International in the fight to be a free world. And I'm going to ask them real quick, there's something I wanted to add in here. I'm going to add, ask Shirley to come give us a few words before we make this presentation. Gail Stoll. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Good evening to each one of you.
Good evening.
It is my pleasure to represent the Landale Rotary Club tonight, and we are very, very appreciative of the relationship that we have with the city of Landale and working together on many projects. I know you've seen the name of Landale Rotary in many of the activities and in the community and in the projects that you have sponsored. We're there to support you. Not only do we do local, but we also do international. And polio from nineteen eighty-five with three hundred and fifty thousand cases of polio every year, we're down to eleven in only three countries in the world. But it's so important that we don't give up on this. It's a plane ride away. And if we don't keep our community immunized and we don't try to complete the job of getting rid of polio in our world forever, it would be a danger to all of us here, right in Landale and in the United States. So we appreciate that you're giving a proclamation to us and acknowledging. But I just wanted to also say, it's a pleasure and our honor to be part of the city of Landale and to support all the activities. What a wonderful city you are and wonderful people there, too. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Let us present you with this resolution. All right.
Polio Free Proclamation on behalf of the city of Landale for all the hard work that Rotary International, particularly Landale Rotary Club, has done to eradicate on this disease worldwide. And so we just want to appreciate you with just this proclamation, something to hang on the wall, just to show our appreciation. And for the club members, hard-working club members, and we want to appreciate you guys as well. So we just want to present this on behalf of the city of Landale, not thirty-three thousand residents.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. And then we'll take a picture.
Do you want to come in?
Yeah, very good. On three. One, two, three. One more, please. One, two, three. Let's check up. Make sure they're good. We got it. Okay. You guys, ladies and gentlemen. Come on, let's hear the number of the polio vaccinations we're giving here in Landale. We did a losing her, and that was probably thirteen.
Very good.
We're going to stay here, Rob. We're going to wait. We're going to wait. Thank you. Yeah, wait there. Do part two. Part two.
Okay, so we're going to make two other presentations, and we'll do these presentations together. I'll just read them, then I'll come down there. These presentations for volunteers from the South Bay Environmental Service Center. These young people have done a lot to volunteer at the service center, which Landale is a member of. We want to just give them a proclamation for all the volunteer work. I saw one in the, in the audience. Let's see if, if I can find my glasses. I saw her when I was a little closer, but there she is. All right. We've got Melon Evans. See the audience? Okay. And we also have Miguel Vasquez. Is that, Miguel's here? Okay, but I'll read heels in, in a way, real quick. But let's start with Melon Evans. Melon Evans has been a volunteer with the South Bay Council of Governments and Environmental Service Center since twenty, January twenty sixteen. You might have seen her last year. She puts in a lot of hours over there. She is a senior in sociology undergrad students at California State University, Long Beach, where she's also the vice president of the Student Psychological, yeah, Psychological Association. Through the study of psychology, she has become an advocate for social and environmental justice. She's volunteered many hours at the service centers, assisting staff in educating South Bay businesses, residents, and the public agencies about energy efficiency and water conservation. She also staff exhibits at community events throughout the South Bay. She also does research projects and provide information on transportation options, as well as support the other environmental programs at the service centers. And she has completed, let's see, how many hours she's completed? A lot of hours, let's see. Two hundred and sixty-two hours of service to the South Bay Service Center, giving her the designation of Bronze Sustainability Leader Award. Let's congratulate her for that. And Miguel, he's not here, but I just want to read it really, really quickly. Miguel Vasquez, he's a Landale resident, by the way, both of these are Landale residents. He has been a volunteer with the South Bay Council of Governments and Environmental Service Center since September twenty-ten. He is a maintenance supervisor at the Marriott Hotel in Redondo Beach. The main reasons why he enjoys volunteering is because he gets to meet a lot of people throughout the South Bay communities and to learn about the environment. He just wants to do his part into helping keep the beautiful planet Earth beautiful. His volunteer activities include pretty much the same, assisting staff in educating South Bay leaders and residents and the public agency about water and energy efficiency and conservation. He also works in the community exhibit, at the exhibit booths, and he assists the staff with Spanish workshops, as well as supporting other environmental programs there at the Environmental Service Center. He also has a Bronze Sustainability Leader Awards, and he has contributed two hundred and fifty hours of volunteer service. So that's a lot. And let's give him a round of applause, too, in his absence. So we'll present these. I don't know if anyone here is for Miguel.
Congratulations.
Two in a row, kiddo. Melon is a permanent picture. She was here last year. Was she here the year before last?
No.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, a lot, lot of hours. And breaking up those hours and, you know, give community service some hours. And we just want to give you this little proclamation on behalf of the city for all your hard work and commitment, because we know it's a commitment. And we know you're going to grad school, so you're still going to be able to commit those type of hours.
Maybe, if I'm here.
Yeah, okay, we're still going to be looking for those hours now. But we just want to congratulate you for all your hard work and your commitment to the sustainability of our environment. And so on behalf of the city of Landale and our thirty-three thousand residents and our business community, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Who's off, Kevin?
You got it.
Which one to do? Okay.
Three. One, two, three. One, please. One, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations. And we'll, we'll make sure Miguel gets you.
So you have the card.
Okay, we have one more presentation. This presentation is actually going to be made by Republic Services, Sam Pena from Republic Services. He's our Government Affairs and Community Outreach for Public Services, which is, Republic Services, which is our waste hall here in the city of Landale. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council staff, residents of the city of Landale. My name is Sam Pena. I'm with Republic Services, your recycle and waste partner here in the city. We like to say thank you very much for all the hard work that the residents did here during the cleanup weeks, during the spring cleanup and during the fall cleanup. Landale has a very unique situation that you have both kind of programs during the cleanup week. You actually have a drop-off event where you can go to Public Works. We have roll-offs set up where people can bring all their bulky items and actually have a curbside program where you can set out your, your bulky items, your big items, on your day of service, and we will pick those up. We are trying in the last couple of years to encourage more people to bring these items actually to Public Works, to the roll-off areas, because it'll keep your communities cleaner, it runs more efficiently. And actually, the last couple of years, it actually has run a little bit better. Let me just give you a quick set of numbers. During the March event, on the residential curbside, we had twenty-five tons of items collected at the curbside. And at the roll-offs, where people bring them in, we had sixty-seven tons of items brought into the Public Works area. During the September event, we had just as many. We had eighteen tons of bulky items that we collected curbside, and we had fifty-one tons collected at, at Public Works during the roll-off. So we want, we encourage people to bring it out to the Public Works. Like I said, it keeps your community cleaner. You know, we run through it much faster. And to encourage that, we developed a program called Bucks for Bulky's. So if you actually went into Public Works, you got a raffle ticket to sign up for a raffle during the spring cleanup. We actually, part of the raffle is actually to ride in our parade truck during the youth parade here in Landale. And during the fall cleanup, the actual is just money. So I'm not sure if that's much of a consolation, but it's still two hundred and fifty dollars. So this year's winner is, for the fall cleanup, is Elizabeth Leighton. Is Elizabeth here today? There she is. So congratulations to Elizabeth. I do have your money here. And again, we really appreciate all the work that all the Landale residents do to actually keep these programs alive. We know that a lot of people have a lot of items. We like people to schedule these items. You do have an allotment of four times a year where you could call and actually schedule these items. You don't have to wait for the fall or to the spring cleanups, but you could call the eight-hundred number, the eight-hundred-two-nine-nine-four-eight-nine-eight number, and you could schedule those bulky items in advance also. So again, council, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, we want to thank you, Republican, and thanks for reminding people about the bulky item pickup. There's, let's say, last week, and I made this joke before, but it's worth repeating because it happened again, where there was a whole love seat in a recliner and like, I guess they had new furniture, whatever, and they decided they was moving, I guess, and it was just, just, people just are not aware that they can call these bulky items in. And what happens is they just sit on in front of people's homes for a number of days, especially if they get rid of them on a Friday.
eight-hundred number, the eight-hundred-two-nine-nine-four-eight-nine-eight number, and you could schedule those bulky items in advance also. So again, council, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, we want to thank you, Republic, and thanks for reminding people about the bulky item pickup. There's, let's say, last week, and I made this joke before, but it's worth repeating because it happened again, where there was a whole love seat in a recliner and like, I guess they had new furniture, whatever, and they decided they was moving, I guess, and it was just, people just are not aware that they can call these bulky items in. And what happens is they just sit on in front of people's homes for a number of days, especially if they get rid of them on a Friday, it won't be till Monday until someone pick them up or what have you. So it's worth bearing, repeating that they can pick up these bulky items four times a year. I didn't realize it was four times a year, but that's good to know. And so if we can, as much as we can get that information out, the better.
Absolutely. And the call-ins is four times a year, but for each call-in, it's actually six items. So you do have a lot of leeway there with the call-ins, but like I said, we encourage people to use that eight-hundred number to schedule these bulky items. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sam, do you want to bring up your, thank you for saying hi on camera for a minute? Yeah. Give her the opportunity to come up for a second.
Well, that's how she wants. She kept going around neighborhoods, picking up stuff, taking it in the city yard.
Yeah.
I know her family.
You know, is it?
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Okay. Moving our agenda along, we got a lot on the agenda tonight. My plan is to try to speed this along as fast as we can. Let's have our safety report. Public safety report, let's have a lieutenant.
I thought I had a pass tonight. Just kidding. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for August sixth, I'm sorry, for October sixteenth through November fifth. Community involvement keeps our community safe. On Monday, October thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, a large cache of weapons was discovered at a local hotel. The manager and maintenance person discovered the guns and drugs in a room of the hotel. The hotel manager notified the South Los Angeles station. Our deputies and detectives responded, arrested those that were involved and on scene, and recovered the weapons and drugs. Through an extensive follow-up investigation, additional suspects were identified and were arrested. This goes to show the value of staying alert and reporting what one sees. If you see it, speak it. And for some holiday cheer, holidays are a precarious time for drivers. Here are some preseason warnings for holiday driving hazards. Driving distracted. This includes using a cellphone to text or call or surfing the web for store hours and sales. Impaired driving. Parties and celebrations usually involve consumption of alcohol. Drive defensively with hypervigilance for other impaired drivers and when attending parties, always have a contingency plan for a designated driver. Pressured driving. The holidays bring increased pressure to perform multiple tasks with time constraints. Drivers will often react to these pressures by driving too fast for the road conditions, making aggressive lane changes, failing to yield the right-of-way, and resorting to road rage. Fatigued driving. Increased demands during the holidays often mean sacrificing needed sleep. A study by the AAA Foundation found that people who slept six to seven hours a night were twice as likely to be involved in a car accident as those sleeping eight hours. Those sleeping less than five hours increased their risk four to five times. Please stay aware and drive safe this upcoming holiday season. This concludes my report and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Lieutenant, the report. Is there any question of the lieutenant's report? I have none. Okay.
I have none. Just a reminder for during the holidays, especially if you make one shortcut, it might affect a hundred other people at the traffic signal, so be conscientious of that. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Lieutenant, for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Even the public safety report gets a clap. That's pretty good. You're doing a fine job. All right. So moving right along. So now we're on our org communications. Org communications is where you have the chance to speak to this body on items that are not on our agenda. So if you'd like to speak to the Longdale City Council or the Redevelopment Successor Agency, this is where you have the opportunity to do so. We ask that you simply line up by the flag. When it's your turn, if you will simply approach the podium, start with your name. At about two minutes, the amber light will come on and it'll give you the signals to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker. Mr. Librarian.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jose Parra and I'm the librarian at your Longdale library. Just wanted to give you an update of what has been going on at the library this past month. On October eighteenth, I had the pleasure of hosting the lieutenant and four of the deputies for a Coffee with the Cops event. I feel it was a great success. We had about sixty people in there. You would say, Lieutenant? We had about sixty people attend along with the city manager was there, so thank you for stopping by. And I believe the mayor was there for a second and a couple of the members here. So thank you so much. It was a great success. A lot of our public was really grateful for the opportunity to be able to meet with their deputies and get to build that community relationship that, you know, helps the community stay strong. We also hosted a flu shot clinic on Thursday, Thursday, October twenty-sixth. We had fifty people take advantage and get their flu shot. Upcoming events at the library include our computer classes this Wednesday focusing on email. We have our family story time every Wednesday at three-thirty. We have our toddler story time every Thursday morning at ten-thirty. This Tuesday, we have a special event for the teens. The teens would be able to come in and make dog tags for our veterans, which will be delivered to the Long Beach Veterans Hospital. I live fairly close, I'm dropping those off. And just as a reminder, in celebration of Veterans Day, the library will be closed this Friday and Saturday. That concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Just so everyone, just those who are new to our proceedings, although it sounds pretty good you guys doing applause, we appreciate that, but knowing we don't have applauses or hissing and booing and stuff like that, but just kind of be mindful of that. Thank you though.
Johnny Castro, Longdale. This is just some information on my part. On October twenty-third, we lost a long-term homeless icon, in my opinion. This gentleman lived on the corner of One Hundred and Sixty-Sixth Street and Hawthorne Boulevard, right in front of the USA Gas Station. Although he was homeless, but he was still a resident of the city. His name was Michael. I never knew his last name. I never asked. He lived there among two big rocks for a good part of approximately thirty years. Winter, spring, and fall would come and go, and he was still there, sitting and sleeping between the two rocks. Although he was homeless, but he never asked for any handouts. He never asked for anything when he went by. He just sat there quietly. Occasionally, I would stop and sit next to him, not to pray into his personal life, but simply to give him company for a few minutes. I would ask Mike, "Why don't you stop smoking, Mike?" He would look up at me with that weathered face, long, full beard, already white. He would say with a quiet voice, "Mind your own business." And he would give me a very sarcastic smile. I would sit up and hand him a five-spot and I would smile and say, "Thank you." "Would you say next time?" Mike would just, every time I would say to him, "We'll see you next time, Mike," he would just grunt. You know, after all of these years, I thought he was a forgotten soul with no friends in the world, but I was wrong. Four days after he passed away, I went by there and I didn't see him there anymore. Instead, I saw, to my surprise, a blanket of candles, notes, flowers, boxes of cigarettes, drawings, writing on the sidewalk and on the two rocks. Forgotten? I guess not. Many people from the community, although throughout the years, looked after him. And I guess he doesn't have to worry about the cold and the rain anymore, so rest in peace, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. How are you guys? Good evening, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
City council member. It's my first time here, so I'm a little nervous, guys. Otherwise, topic of the matter is gonna be of a business on one sixty-seven Hawthorne Boulevard called Brooklyn Bar. My name is Tim. I've been a resident for the past eight years, living in Longdale, let alone the past three years I've been working in the city of Longdale at this bar called Brooklyn Bar. The matter is that you were being shut down for thirty days over something that I can't understand. It's hard to be explained as far as an employee and have a boss who's your best friend tell you that his business is being shut down for thirty days of being labeled something that we're not, we're not any close to being a biker gang bar. We actually believe in our hearts that we cleaned up that place compared to what it used to be and the things and the people that used to go in there. It's not that situation anymore. It's a very great, beautiful neighborhood bar. I'm there every day and to not be there for the next thirty days, it's pretty hurtful because of the holiday season. My employees won't be able to work for the next thirty days and like I said, we just can't find a reason why. We can comprehend what has been told to us, but I have some of my friends and some of my family, the Brooklyn family here, to show support, let alone, we're not trying to work against you, we're trying to work with you. And I feel if some of these issues were brought to us, we could have fixed it earlier. I'm not trying to fight with you guys. I'm not here trying to even bow and mouth the city or my bar. I love my bar. I love the people that come in and I met so many people in this beautiful city of Longdale that are my friends now and close family members. And to have this bar shut down for the next thirty days, it's gonna hurt. There's a lot of birthdays, a lot of just camaraderie in there. And I wish you guys would come and see it. I have people that barely turned twenty-one, up to ninety years old, just sitting down and having a beer together. They all know each other. I've met a lot of great people and we've done a lot. And we try and try to please everybody. Now, we're not gonna do it, not overnight, but we will try to clean up our act and do as you guys say, but I just feel it's unfair what has happened and I want you guys just to hear me out because I'm hurt, you know? I just don't know, you know, how to explain to people when they ask us about the current situations going on because they're hurt too and they don't understand where they're gonna go for the next thirty days. There's certain people that they don't have a significant other, they don't have the money to go on vacation or do things for Thanksgiving, but since I've started work there, I've always had a Thanksgiving dinner that I do on that Tuesday. Unfortunately, we're not gonna have it there. Unfortunately, some of these people aren't gonna get a warm, quick meal or just have the camaraderie of people showing each other that they love and care each other. And, you know, my reason for speaking is just so you guys know that, you know what? We're not trying to work against you. We want to work with you. And any problems that do persist, like I said, I am the manager and I would love to, you know?
That's time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Been a resident of Longdale for forty years now. I have handouts I would like to give to the city council that are pictures I have taken throughout the city, most of them on my street. Now, some person came to the city and said that a plant was coming across the sidewalk and interfered with a wheelchair. I understand that. And I'm sorry that they didn't come up and knock on my door and say, "Hey, can you fix it for me?" They didn't. The city came out. And did they say you have a plant coming across the sidewalk? No, they gave me a checklist. They gave me a checklist the second time after I got up, over sixty years of age, on a ladder and painted the eve above my door. My trash cans that have been thirty-four feet from the sidewalk for almost forty years had to be moved so that they are out of sight from the street. If you look at those pictures, you will see a car has not been registered for four years. It is not in their driveway. It is on the lawn next to their driveway. In front of it is a mobile home, also has not been registered for four years. Do they get talked to? No. People down the street have built a cat carrier attached to their house so the cat can come out the window with unpainted wood. We're not allowed unpainted wood. I painted my wood fence. My red wood fence was painted because we're not allowed unpainted wood. There are lots of pictures in there with people with wooden fences that are not painted. There are trash cans where they have built concrete right next to the sidewalk to put their four trash cans. I don't want another note coming to my house saying, "You have got rubbish in your plants that are out there at the sidewalk." I am five houses from a liquor store and I am the only house that doesn't have a fence built around my yard. Guess where everything blows? From all the trees that belong to the city and everybody who drops their candy wrappers, five houses from the liquor store. But every time I turn around, I painted the fence, I chopped it blunt, I painted my walls, and they say, "Oh, we're now going to call and bring the city against you. They're going to take legal action because I had trash." My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Charmaine Doty, Longdale. I have kind of a concern with one of the hedges that's in the middle of Hawthorne Boulevard. I have a car that's low. If you're driving one of those big, whoops, one of those big trucks or something, it's probably okay, but over here at one forty-ninth and Hawthorne Boulevard, as I come from the east to the west, I've almost got hit three times because my car is low, the shrubbery is higher, and I have to take my car out onto the street to make sure no car is coming. And so if they could just cut that down a little bit more for our cars that are low, and I know my car's not the only one that's low because I've seen them go by there, and I really don't want anybody getting hurt and I certainly don't want to get hurt. I don't want to end up in the hospital. But it's just, it might not affect some people, but it does affect some people. And I also went to the Coffee with the Cops at the library and had coffee and donuts and it was very nice. And there were quite a few people there. And I'm also concerned with the Brooklyn Bar, why they're shutting it down for thirty days. That means the people that work there will have no income for thirty days. So how are they supposed to pay bills and rent and buy food and things? I know the people are really, really good people there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam London, one seventy-first. Boy, I know about plant life. Had the same problem. Mama's too tall. I really believe that when code enforcement goes out, maybe they should have to do a three-sixty so that they see everybody around. Then you don't feel so singled out because if they've turned around and they've looked all around your property, at everybody, all your neighbors, and they go after everybody that they can visually, you know, that they can see, then, you know, Joe next door doesn't get to get away with his crap any longer while you're being, you know, your head's being chopped off while his is too. It makes you feel a little less singled out. Yeah. Believe me, I've talked about it a long time, for years.
Please direct your remarks to the council, please.
Once upon a time, when I was much younger, I was a bartender for a biker bar and it was a definite biker bar, not only general motorcycle riders, but the local motorcycle club as well. I hear that there's a few motorcycles that may go to the Brooklyn Bar, which is, you know, kind of, sort of, not exactly a neighbor of mine. It doesn't compare to what I worked at, not at all. But Del Taco, now that Del Taco is moving in, I have heard more about the existence of that bar than I ever heard before because really, no one talked about the Brooklyn Bar at city council or at the planning commission meetings until we heard about Del Taco coming in. And I really, really wish the city had been able to do something about Del Taco to maybe look at a healthy food option, something, but my understanding is Del Taco met all the qualifications and therefore the city had to approve everything and so here we are. And now it looks like they're gonna possibly pay a little bit of the price for Del Taco's moving in to Longdale. I don't go to the Brooklyn Bar, but it does seem to be the only low- Brooklyn Bar, but it does seem to be the only local bar that I've seen, 'cause I don't look. But it would be a shame to see it disappear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Deana, 148th Street. I just wanted to let you guys know I have my hearing tomorrow on my extra concrete, which you guys are claiming I have an extra parking pad. And I agree with this woman over here. It's funny how I got singled out on my block, but if they just took a look around, there's some other things going on. And I hate to turn to my neighbors, but I have been singled out. I've had to pay two landscapers. I do have my landscaping in. I know I have to get with code enforcement again. I did go see Mr. Williams after the coffee with a cop, sheriff, and got to see him and tell him, did he get my message that my landscape was delayed one more week? And he replied, did you get my message? So I thought, well, maybe I missed his message. I'll go home and check my phone. Well, it wasn't. He ran out with my big old file and gave me my second notice in person. He's not very friendly either, by the way. I'm not rude to him at all. But this has caused a lot of stress. I'm a single person. Like I said, I had to pay two landscapers now over this issue of a little extra concrete. When somebody on another block just poured a whole yard of concrete, brand new. But it's funny how code enforcement, don't they work Saturdays and Sundays for certain things? Don't they drive around the city and see things? Couldn't they put a stop to that for the poor people? Now, I don't know what they're gonna do. But tomorrow I have my hearing on my parking pad, which is not a parking pad, it's extra concrete. Right now I have chairs on it. I have lounge chairs on it. Sometimes we sit out there on it. Doesn't have a car on it right now. But I do feel singled out. Constantly, code enforcement, parking is constantly coming in here. But where do they stop? They just eye my place. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello there, Johnny London. Definitely not a member of the Friends and Family Look the Other Way program. This is another fine case. They're coming into sight for one thing, unless they look around to see all the other violations around them, they should stop at the first violation and not nitpick her house and being abused to her. That this city has a lot to be cleaning up and they shouldn't abuse certain people who try. I mean, if my house wasn't up to par, I know they'd be all over me. And that's why I would like to bring up too, is also you guys are gonna have the parkway issue in front of you. I'm definitely not a member of the Friends and Family Look the Other Way program. Nasser instituted. It was more of a privilege and not a right to have your parkway done. You had to maintain your house. You had to keep it up so that way they knew when you got that permit for that parkway, that you would maintain that parkway and not let it run down. So when you guys get to the parkways, hopefully you'll look at that and charge accordingly. I paid three thousand dollars. Thank you. Are you guys gonna do that to these people? No. There should be certain boundaries and that. Don't just give these permits out nilly-willy. And that make sure that who's ever gonna get that property, which you guys are responsible, although we have to maintain it, should be up to par. And also, have the people who are on the code enforcement, please, as they drive around, look at all this stuff in this city and do something about it. And then maybe for all the poor friends in the Brooklyn Bar, you could get a GoFundMe page for those guys that aren't gonna be able to have any payment for a month, that have families, kids, that are out of job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I wanted, first of all, thank everyone who made comments tonight. Let's see if there's any responses from the diocese. Let's start with council members.
I don't know too much about the code cases. Maybe Steve or Tiffany can reply to that. The Brooklyn Bar, Deana's problem. Who else had a problem? Ms. Chastain. But Jose, I wasn't able to make the coffee with the cop 'cause I had a meeting with the library trust with Steve later in that day. But I hope he got sixty new applications for library cards. Johnny, I knew Mike. I knew his family. I know Deana. My daughter and Deana played Longdale Pato Puff way back when we lived in grass huts over here. He, valuable asset to the city. I knew him before he went his way. And yes, he'll be missed. And with that, I'll, you know, I don't know, like I said, the code enforcement case, I'll pass it on to my colleague. Counselor.
Yeah, on the code enforcement, maybe we can get what we can and can't talk about. What's the situation?
Well, I mean, I don't know the details of the cases, but the Brooklyn Bar case, it was a business license issue for violating some of the conditions. And it was the decision of the director that's occurred. So they still have an appeal right, but the appeal would be to the city manager, not to the council. And same with the code enforcement cases. They're at the staff level, so they're not things that the council is legally allowed to be involved in. They need to go their course. But I will say and would like to say to the public that it is generally the city's policy that when they're opening a code case on a certain property after receiving a complaint, that they do look at the whole block, both sides. Just because people don't know that their neighbors have been cited doesn't mean that it's not happening. The city, at any one time, has five to six hundred open cases that they're monitoring on different properties. So there are a lot of them. People just don't know. But they try to be fair.
Okay. Well, and I forgot to thank everyone that also came up and spoke specifically. Thank you to Jose Para for your updates as usual. Thank you, Johnny Castro, for your anecdote regarding Mike. And as far as what I will say to Jim, thank you for your approach. I appreciate your sincerity. And thank you, Charmaine, for bringing up the situation regarding the hedges, if we could look into that. And I'll pass it along to my colleague. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Osborne.
Thank you, Robert. Well, going down the list, yeah, thank you, Jose, for all the notifications. I was out of town on the date of the coffee with the cop, so I'm sorry I didn't miss that. But you mentioned Veterans Day event where the flags on the lawn are coming, and I encourage everyone to contribute to that. I have a flag up there for a family member who was killed in service. So that's a positive thing. Anyway, getting on to the other matters of, it was Tim, right? Tim. And you and I have met before, 'cause I've actually been to the Brooklyn Bar probably about two or three times in the afternoons. I gave you that old picture of when it was the hut many, many decades ago. However, I just wanted to clarify a couple of these things, 'cause you said that issues were not brought earlier. All we know is councils, what staff has informed us. And when we heard of this, it was an email notification. And in there, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but there was earlier notifications in the body of the email that you sent that said that residents had complained. Now, we're not given the details. We're not told who they are, where they live, or how many, or that sort of thing. But would you say there was more or less than a dozen complaints? Or was it just one?
More than one. There were several. I don't have that number in front of me, but it was in response to complaints received.
Now, to clarify what Tim was saying, are those then brought forward to, maybe if he's not there, but some other member or owner of the bar?
Well, and if I could interrupt, Steve doesn't know about this yet, because if it's appealed, it would go to him. So he's been kept out of the process at this point.
I'm directing it to the details of the body of the email.
Right, but it would be Ken and Debbie and Sean who would know more about it than Steve at this point.
Sean, you wanna answer that? How many?
Yeah, I didn't know. The director for finance handles the revocation, for the temporary revocation. But we, this department, community development, has received numerous complaints, zoning violations throughout the last year regarding this bar.
Now, are those complaints then forwarded on to the owner? I believe Tim said he was the manager. So is he, what, out of the loop?
We forwarded on to code enforcement, or code enforcement thereof receives the complaints and investigates the complaints.
No, I'm saying city staff. Do they notify it to the owner? He's the manager. So is he then kept out of the loop on that?
No, I believe code enforcement, I'm not gonna speak for them, but I believe MSD does contact when there's a violation. They directly go out to and contact the bar operator. That's correct.
The owner.
The owner. I actually, I actually have contacted the owner of the property myself, personally.
So hearing that, it seems that it might be a possibility.
At the Brooklyn Bar. The Brooklyn Bar does not own that property. The property owner's a different property owner. I've contacted regarding the complaints from residents coming to my department complaining about outdoor barbecuing, loud noise throughout the night, lots of motorcycles. There've been several occasions where over four hundred motorcycles, without a special event permit, have been at the bar. There've been numerous complaints from many residents.
Well, one other clarification. I heard him say that it was a thirty-day suspension, but wasn't your email, didn't it say fifteen? Am I mistaken? I thought I read that. You remember, Robert?
I think it's thirty.
It was thirty?
I'm not recalling. I don't have it in front of me to decide. I don't wanna say something incorrect.
Anyway, I'm just trying to clear that up.
It's a thirty days. My understanding is a thirty days. Yeah, with the fifteen days to appeal.
Oh, it's fifteen days to appeal. And that's still pending, right? So it's not a done deal. They can still, the owner of that is, can still appeal this?
That's correct. Yes.
So it's not a done deal on the suspension. So what we heard tonight, that it's more, it sounded like it was a done deal. It's not in fact. There is.
That's correct. They can still exercise their rights for appeal.
All right. And I won't say anything more on it until the outcome of the appeal. Did I get the name right? Ma'am, was it Sharp? Oh, you wrote it on. Thank you. No address was given on your document, but I'm gonna presume, you know where she was talking about on this document?
I don't. I was gonna talk to staff. They could look it up by the, by the name, but I don't have any contact.
Yeah, if you wanna give that to staff, just to clarify, so they can identify it on this handout that you've given. The only thing I recall on this was a speaker came before this body reporting his wheelchair was hitting a, he said a cactus at the time, but it was a.
If it's the same property, there was a comment made about that.
I'm only guessing. The photos don't show it, so.
Is it actually not a cactus? It looks.
Yeah, it's an agave. But don't, you can't speak while we're speaking.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but we can't have any discussion from the.
Then I do recall what this was about. So if Steve can look into the issues involved of that. And then Charmaine, I saw Frank take note of your complaint about the sightline. He gave me a look that he'll take care of it. Okay. And what else do we have? Parking pads. I'll let Robert speak on some of these things. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmen. So I don't wanna rehash most of these that we already went over. Of course, thanking the library and Jose for his updates. And although I didn't know Mike personally, obviously I knew of him for the last, past twenty years. And I did have the opportunity to speak to his family, two members of his family, one of which was Gina, to give our condolences. And we will be adjourned in this meeting, tonight's session, in his memory. And he will definitely be missed. Talked about the Brooklyn Bar. We'll handle that according to the process. Ms. Doty, thank you for, as you always, bringing these things to our attention. And so we'll take a look at those shrubs and make sure there's not a driving hazard there. Other than that, without repeating, Johnny London talked about the parkway regulations that we'll be taking a look at to make sure that we have the appropriate license. So I appreciate that. And obviously, the, having a fair, in fair and code enforcement practices, always here to remind us of that. And we'll make sure we take a look at that so that it's always, you know, instilled in our code enforcement officers that we must have these fair code enforcement practices across the board. So I wanna thank you and Ms. London for bringing that issue up. The rest of the issues, I think, we pretty much already exhausted, so I won't rehash them, 'cause we do have a long agenda tonight. So with that, we're gonna close public comments and council members' comments, and we will move our agenda. We are now on item G. Item G is our consent calendar. There's ten items on item G. Is there, is there an item you'd like to pull? Are you wanna?
I just have a question on item.
Okay, we have a question on one of the items.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number six, the Safe Roots to School project. It was noted in the staff report that around early January 2016, the Longdale Elementary School District decided to, or I guess as it was stated, a lack of interest to further oversee the project. Is there, if you could refresh my memory, is it just they kinda dropped out, or was it lack of attendance for meetings?
And what happens if they do decide not to oversee the project?
Well, they decide not, no longer to manage the project. So they essentially just turn it over to staff or to the city to manage and to salvage the project.
And I guess my concern is that it seems, it seems this is a project that's heavily within their arena, looking at the reports. It goes over training and assemblies and all that. If, so this is in phase two. If it goes to phase three, we're not, say there's a shortage of funds, we're not responsible for the cost of anything that might go over the, whatever grant we have left on that.
No, we're completely covered. So we feel very comfortable to be able to cover both phase two and three.
And we're not expending any extra staff time on this. I believe it said that the grant is covering.
The amount of staff time is really minimal. It's just overseeing, overseeing the work done by the consultant.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Well, I have a question on the program itself. It seems like this is largely, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, a school district function in the city being a partner with the school district. Now, it seems to suggest to me that if the school district is no longer a partner, but yet they are the main principal, then why would we continue the project without the school district being the principal partner? Unless I'm misreading how the program works.
Unfortunately, the city was, the city was the applicant for those grant funds. So the city, unfortunately, the school dropped out. And if we don't continue forward with the project, then the city would be liable for those funds already expended.
So what would be our obligation? I understand how this particular year, what would be our obligation going forth? This is a grant-by-grant opportunity, which means we wouldn't necessarily have to apply for it the next go-around?
Well, no, this is an outstanding grant. It's many years in play and essentially nothing's been done. It's been dropped. And the city, or we're at risk losing those monies. So.
No, I understand that. I'm saying after this grant has been exhausted, the program, at some point, you reapply.
We would reapply for another safer.
So would the city then reapply for the Safe Passages Program, seeing that the school is not participating? I know we're in for it now because we were the principal, like you said, the principal applicant. But after it's all said and done, it ran its course, would we be looking to reapply as solo without the school district?
We would still be eligible, yes, as a single entity.
But I don't know why we would. We would be eligible, but I don't know why we would.
I have a question. At what point does this project end? Because when we did apply, it was a partnership and we took the lead in terms of submitting. But then the school district did, for various reasons, decide to not want to manage it any further. So.
We've got a grant extension until June 2018.
So if we're not, I give it to, so if we're still held liable because we were the, I guess, the principal applicant, with the school district being our partner, what liability do they have for dropping out? How do they just decide to drop out? Wasn't the grant probably awarded to us based on we have a partner in the school district?
They really have no bearing in the grant itself because the county doesn't issue grants to school bodies, just cities.
So what about the breach of, I'm just using a term of word which may not apply, breach of contract? Because we got the grant, knowing that they was our partner, and then you dropped out. Okay. Does that, what does that mean? Maybe that's more of a legal question than from the engineer. But it seemed like to me, if I have a partner and we go in, yeah, I may be the principal that's receiving the funding, but yes, I'm obligated to produce. But I'm producing based on the partnership that we have an agreement with. But you dropped out. It seemed to me that's some type of breach.
There was. There was, there is a contract that was established between the city and the school. I'd have to consult with the city attorney to see what remedies we might have with the school district.
Let me get Councilman Pat Kearney in there.
Yeah, I was the same thing. Do they have any input now at all? 'Cause I know when I first got on the council, maybe Jim and Robert remember that, they were telling us, this is where we want this sign, this is where we want this sign. They had all this input. Do they have any input at all now?
There is, there is gonna be plenty of work between the school and the consultant. Obviously, the consultant will have to be working with the school district. Obviously, the consultant will have to be working with the school district to, to evaluate the program, as well as to perform some of that outreach and education.
And then one more, one more question. I just see we decided to go with Alta Planning to Design, which is nine hundred, eight hundred and forty-six dollars higher than the lowest bid, why is that? I read this, but couldn't the, haven't broke to the same job that Alta Planning do?
Well, Alta Planning seemed to be the more logical choice, because essentially, they created a phase, they, they developed phase one, they have the contract already for phase three, so they have that project familiarity.
Okay. That's all, I don't have.
No more questions?
Well, I just want to make sure that, that we.
No, I'm curious if he's going to make a motion.
Yeah, that we convey to the school district of our displeasure that they dropped out of our program, essentially has breached our agreement. It seems like to me, if the school district in the city constantly is trying to build relationships, you know, stronger relationships, this really doesn't contribute to that effort. If you, on the one hand, say, partner with us, that these are our children, and we're going to make this, this grant opportunity happen, and then we get the grant, and then the school district, for whatever their reasons are, dropped out. I can see if they, if the, the program ran its course, and then it came up for renewal, and they decided, you know what, that was, you know, we're not obligated to, to do a new program. I can, I can see that, because it's a program by program situation, but for them to just breach the agreement just because they can, it seemed like that doesn't make for good government, and doesn't make for good partnerships. With that being said, what is the pleasure of, if there's not any more discussion?
I have one item I'd like to pull, Robert. Number ten.
Okay, so we're not pulling this, this is going to be on.
Well, I think for that one, we kind of have to.
No.
For six?
If.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a few questions.
Okay.
But he wants to pull ten.
If we're going later down the road, pull number sixteen. I'd like to have ten tied into number sixteen, because it's a cost toward the city. I'd like to have that all combined.
No problem. Okay, the sign and sixteen.
It's part of the budget issue, the cost of the new sign.
So what, so what different, what would we do differently?
Just want to include it in the discussion.
Well, if you look, read it, there's a cost to take that sign down, it's been up there for three, four years, just, you know, non-working. Let's wait to see how our budget is, and then decide if we want to take it down for.
Okay, there you go, that's what I was looking for, what you meant by put it into.
I saw that, I think the communication on the council was it was going to be taken down, but not replaced. So there is no cost, other than the demolition, though, but there's no replacement scheduled, as I understood.
Yeah. This item is just to authorize us to solicit bids, should the council wish to do that, to remove the sign, it isn't operable, the parts are no longer made. The actual replacement would come at another point, if the council wished, but again, if you wanted to not spend the funds now.
So the discussion includes the replacement.
Right, and the bids and everything else.
But for now, this is just a.
Yeah, but we don't have to obligate for replacement today.
No, it's not what we're doing. It's just the, the bid, and then estimated cost, I believe, was in here too.
For the demolition.
In fact, it would probably come back as a separate agendas item, one way or another anyway.
It would, yes.
For the actual board, yes.
And I'm okay with Pat wants to include it as part of the.
Sure, okay.
Include the financial discussion.
Yeah, let's include it with our.
Is that what you want to do? Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure I was clear on.
Doesn't matter, we'll get to it.
Okay, so what is the?
Did you still want to pull it, or do you want to?
No, you didn't want to pull it, right?
I, I want to pull it and combine it with number sixteen, if you decide to pull that.
Well, all this does is just take it down, because it's dead out there.
Because of the budget, it's going to be totally issued.
I'd like to leave it in, just because we're going to take it down.
Yeah, we're going to leave it in, because it's not going to have bearing on the budget.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, with that, what is the pleasure of this?
I can move approval, will.
A second.
They're just having a sidebar.
He just had a concern, we need to spend the bond funds, there's a number of projects that are sitting that need to be done. The funding for this would come from the bond funds, and this would be the replacement, and demolition of the existing, but we certainly can move this to the next meeting when we talk about the other items, if that's the council's direction, or if you wanted us to solicit proposals, we could do that too. But either way, we'll.
No, we can include it with this, because it's not going to have a bearing on.
The removal.
The removal would be about, the estimate before bids is about twelve thousand dollars to come in and remove that and finish off the footings.
It's dead, and it's going to be fixed.
Okay, with that being said, can you repeat your?
My, my motion, yeah.
That we adopt the consent calendar in its entirety?
I second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Osborne, that we, that we adopted consent calendar.
No, what?
And then, would you like to hear that?
Is, wait a minute. Yeah, in its entirety, and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. I'm going to ask the city attorney to read the ordinance. She going to read it first?
No.
No, there's nothing pulled, it's all included in my motion.
And Madam City Attorney is going to read the ordinance first.
The ordinance is item number five, the ordinance number one-one-four-three dash one-seven, in order to the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, prohibiting recreational vehicles from parking on such streets without a city issued permit.
Thank you. Without any further discussion, would the council please vote on the consent
Motion approved unanimously with Mayor Pro Tem Reed absent.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Item number fourteen, marijuana use regulations. Let's have the staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members of the public, I'll be quick and brief. So on June twenty-seventh, two thousand seven, Governor Brown signed Senate Bill ninety-four, known as the Municipal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulations and Safety Act, which came, became effective immediately. Now, taking the council back, we've recently adopted a marijuana ordinance dealing with this coming down from Proposition sixty-four, and the purpose of this update was to merge existing state regulations and into a singular regulatory scheme, because of all the different regulations that have come out recently. As a result, certain references in state law and definitions provided in our current Longdale Municipal Code are somewhat out of date. Therefore, staff is bringing forward this ordinance for consideration, updating, and strengthening our current regulations to be consistent with state law. And the attachment of the ordinance is an attachment was, attachment to of the staff report, which outlines all the changes, basically definition updates and making it a lot cleaner and our ordinance is clearer. The Planning Commission reviewed this on September twenty-seventh and expressed concerns, as they originally did on the original ordinance. The unanimously voted down and adopted to recommend, I'm sorry, the commission declined to recommend adoption of the proposed ordinance and amendments to the city council. They all expressed concerns about the same things they did last time, about, you know, looking for opportunities to advance marijuana cultivation in the city and allow different types of uses. So they just wanted us to bring that to the council's attention. And the said attached resolution is attached. The city attorney's offices reviewed the city, the ordinance, the project has been found to be exempt from CEQA, we did notice it, there are no impacts to our funding. Therefore, staff recommends approval, we'll be happy to answer any questions we have at this time, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or clarification from the staff before we open up the public hearing?
At this time.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. It is now seven forty-nine, we're opening the public hearing. If there's any that would like to testify in this matter, we ask that you stand and be sworn in by the city attorney.
Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the city council this evening? Thank you, both.
Yes, ma'am, come on down.
Pam London wants to be first. I would just like to say that part of the Planning Commission's concern was tax revenue, not about.
Pull that up a little bit for me.
The marijuana so much, but the tax revenue that the City of Longdale could be missing out on. And also voters' rights, because apparently there was a high percentage of voters in the City of Longdale that were voting for this initiative. But sure, there's a lot of issues with a lot of things. Marijuana, of course, being just one of the small things. But this city needs revenue, we need law enforcement, and I think all of us, those of us who would like to see more revenue coming into the city, even if it's through marijuana, in order to have more law enforcement, hey, I don't care where it comes from, just so it comes. Because I want to see our sheriff's department beefed up to where it used to be. But the Planning Commission did not reject the city's recommendation based on anything nefarious, but more so because voters' rights and tax revenue, or the possibilities of tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Randall Abraham, Longdale resident. The, in tonight's agenda later on, there's a discussion about the budget, and how to kind of resolve the deficit and upcoming problems. This would certainly be a method to do that. California is estimating five billion dollars in revenue from, from legalized marijuana next year. LA City is estimating fifty million in tax revenue, and they made twenty-one million in medical marijuana revenue in twenty sixteen. Another major city that will allow marijuana cultivation and sales, it will be San Diego. So I think what the Planning Commission is saying is, the city needs to at least explore this a little bit more deeper. And again, with a city the size of Longdale, you wouldn't want more than one or two dispensaries at the most, I think two, two being the very most. And I think that would allow for, I know in tonight's budget staff report, they said the, the cost increases for the sheriff's department is simply to pay for the increases, ensure it's not any increase in staffing. So I think this might be a way to allow some additional staffing also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring it back.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the public hearing, having taken testimony, it is now seven fifty-three, public hearing is now closed, we bring it up to diocese for some discussion.
There's something, if you guys want.
Any discussion, any more to go for?
No, we can be resistant at any time, because I know there's been some research, not with smoking the weed, but the cannabis oil. There was a young lady that had fourteen tumors in her chest, and she started taking the cannabis oil, and within a year, the tumors are gone. So I don't want to see head shops here, I'm sorry, that's the term I used when I was younger. Most of the money's paid, most of the transactions done in cash, we don't know where the cash goes. Most banks would not handle marijuana dispensaries money, because they think it's illegal. So a lot of it's going offshore. So our original recommendation, I would stick with that.
And I also agree with that. I recently attended a meeting where we had some police enforcement, law enforcement agencies, some of the speakers were chief of police, and they even said that they expect the crime to go up with the legal marijuana, because it'll be competing with the cheaper illegal drugs. So I'm okay with our original stance.
Okay, a couple of things. There's a great irony in this, that, and the speakers were correct, that the budget issues, oh, and by the way, that's been pulled because of the absence of one of the councils, so that'll be brought back. And I almost wonder if this item should be pulled and brought back as well, but regardless, the irony is that many in law enforcement, you know, want stricter enforcement and don't support this, but then again, we are facing these costs, and it's not, as you said, Mr. Abraham Staffing, it is the liability trust fund costs, which myself and the city manager have had numerous discussions, and likewise, I've done with others, in other elected positions in the region. Because this is not going away, and it's a case of, I want to say, perhaps unscrupulous attorneys that just file constant lawsuits, and so the costs are then passed by the county onto the cities, and we don't have much recourse. And it doesn't seem to be ending, and it goes up quarter million to half a million every year in recent years. It's almost unsustainable. So I hate to say, but we may have to think out the box a little on this matter, but I would be curious on feedback, I really don't want to put the lieutenant on the spot on this, maybe when the captain returns. But going back to my question, does this have to be decided tonight? Could this be waited on for a full body?
I mean, I would recommend that we do it now, because this is to be consistent with the state laws that go into effect on January first, so we need the first reading, and then the second reading, and then the time for it to be effective. But of course, this is something that at any meeting, you could ask to put back on the agenda, to change your mind.
It's a fluid matter.
Right, and to get more information, you know, if you want to officially ask the captain for a report, and of course.
Well, I'm curious department thoughts on it, I guess.
Well, since LA is allowing it, they'll have experience, and then once it is January, and we see the cities that are allowing it, how it's going.
Yeah, and that's another thing.
There'll be more information.
You know, I think there's, there's perhaps a rosier picture presented than what reality may end up being, because if you have so many jumping on the bandwagon, I don't think these enormous profits anticipated may actually transpire. You know, it's almost like flooding the market, in other words, so.
So far, most people are only jumping on the medical bandwagon, not many are allowing the recreational. But in light of that, the state is trying to get regulations and accommodate the banking issues, the insurance issues, all of that.
I get the timeline picture, and as you said, it's fluid, and so it could be, all right, that's all I got.
Thank you. So I would be kind of, it seemed like we might be closer on the, on the same page, only because, this is one of those things that, one of the speakers did allude to the fact that, and I forget what the numbers were, but it was Proposition sixty-five did pass by a pretty significant margin here in the city of Longdale. In addition to that, in my role as, as Assembly staffer, I just had the opportunity to speak with a lot of people on this issue up in Sacramento. And there's a move, this can, this can go a lot of ways. So right now, there's a few cities that, I'm going to call it the industry, has looked to negotiate with cities for a reasonable marijuana use ordinance. And three cities I know in particular did not negotiate with the, with the industry on a marijuana ordinance. The result of that was a ballot initiative. When a ballot initiative, when it's placed on a ballot initiative, of course, legislative, legislation through the box, ballot box is what they, they call it, the city loses a lot of the control that they may have if they crafted a piece of legislation, an ordinance. They missed the opportunity to say that, to zone it in a way that they wanted to zone, to have maybe a public benefits that they may can craft as well, that can be part of the legislation. There's just a whole host of things you can do if you do legislatively, as opposed to the industry dictating to the council and the residents what a marijuana use ordinance will look like. What they simply do, they simply, in the case of the City of Long Beach, instead of having one per council district, and I realize Long Beach is much bigger than the City of Longdale, which is what they were aiming for, the ballot initiative, more understandably, calls for at least three or so in each council district. If they had have just tombstoned that into legislation, they would only have one per council district. And we're talking about dispensaries here, we're not talking about the other marijuana uses, like cultivations and testing and all those type of things. So in that case, the City of, of Long Beach really kind of missed an opportunity to regulate an industry that is not going away. Matter of fact, not only are there's move to do them by budget, zoning by budget, but there's also a move to perhaps have the legislature step in once again to take away local control, and say, this is how you will regulate marijuana use, you will open it up, it won't have a complete ban, that's only going to be able to sustain itself for so long. I don't want to put the, the city in a position where they find themselves in, we have a piece of legislation not by the ballot, that's worse than we could ever imagine, and we ever would have agreed to as an ordinance. And that's, that's the risk we run if we say, simply say no. Because, you know, all they have, all the steps you would need to do, of course, is to get on the ballot, obviously, you know, you float, you get your signatures or what have you, and, and the signatures are not going to be that hard to get. You paying people X amount of dollars per signature, you'll get, they'll get the signatures. And whatever it is on their ballot measure, the language, we will have to live with, whether we like it or not, and we will basically lose control of regulation. So I would like to see this brought back at a certain time, I'm prepared to go a certain way tonight, perhaps, but as the city attorney stated, that this will keep us in conformity with the state law and the timeline, but at the same time, I want to see us bring this back so we can make sure that if a no is a no, and it's not because we realize what the adverse effect could be if we have a solid no.
Yeah, I hear you.
So this gives us a little, a little time. So this gives us a little time. Would you agree this gives us a little time we can bring it back? Yeah, because I do have some of the concerns that you mentioned, but at the same time, and there, another point, too. If you have a complete ban, of course, you know that we won't be qualified for the, things how the marijuana funds, dollars, and these dollars are supposed to be used for public safety, abatement, and things of that nature.
That was a selling point.
Yeah, let's see, what happens if you have your neighboring city, you know, which is a walkaway, a car drive away, you go purchase it, you use in Longdale. If there is a problem, that problem existed whether they bought it in Longdale, or they bought it in one of the neighboring cities, but City of Longdale will not be qualified for any of those funds, because we have a straight-out ban. That's one of the risks we run as well. So I don't want to belabor the point, but I just wanted to put that. So with that being said, we'll go back to this particular issue, and we'll see if there's any, was the pleasure of the council concerning such? We are at council discussion, yeah. So if there's not any further discussion, we can have a motion?
Then I'll make a motion to accept the draft the city council went with, and we can bring it back any time to change.
With that part, we don't have to be part of the motion. Bring it back anytime.
That's an automatic.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay, okay. And we're going to ask the city attorney, she's going to, you got something to read, right?
I do.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
This is ordinance number 1144-17, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, amending Chapter 17.100, Section 5.80.060, and Section 1.08.020 of the Longdale Municipal Code to update the city's marijuana regulations consistent with new state law and a finding of exemption from CEQA. Thank you.
Okay, will the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously with Mayor Pro Tim Reed absent.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is administration, item number 15, citywide street sweeping services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item recommends the city council approve a contract amendment with Clean Street to extend the street sweeping services for another two years. It would take it through the end of 2019. Clean Street is willing to extend it for another two years, and they will abide by the terms of their current contract. However, they've requested a five-and-a-half percent increase due to increasing cost for their debris disposal. Five-and-a-half percent increase comes to about $10,000 additional cost a year. However, the request does seem reasonable. They haven't had an increase in the last nine years, and the new rate would be in line with what some of the other South Bay cities are currently paying. Staff has had no issues or concerns with the quality of service or their performance. There are sufficient funds in public works, street maintenance fund accounts to cover the extra costs. And with that, therefore, staff recommends that city council approve the contract amendment as well as the Clean Street's rate request.
You answered my last, or my main question, there's funds to cover.
Yes, there is.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me ask you this, Frank. So you mentioned that there was, the 5% is necessary for disposal fees? So obviously, we confirm that that is the case equivalent to cover that.
Let's just take the word for it.
Well, that is, we didn't have, we didn't have anything, we don't have the actual numbers for disposal. We don't. That was just essentially just in a letter sent to staff.
So if they say we need a 5% increase, and we need it because A, B, and C, we just take it that that's accurate, that is not a 2%, not a 1%, but the 5% is what it is, because they said that's what it is?
I feel that is the opinion.
In this case, yes.
Is there, is that normal? I mean, because, I mean, if that's the case, I mean, I wish I can just tell someone, you know, I need a 10% increase, because I just need a 10% increase. You should trust me on that one.
No, it's not normal practice.
I'm prepared to vote for it, but you could double-check that?
We could.
Okay. So what happens after we award this extension with the 5% and it turns out that it was only a 2% increase in dumping fees or whatever?
Well, we could do it not to exceed, but it'd be based on the actual numbers submitted to the city.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to be watching this one. Okay, I appreciate it.
Every penny counts, Frank.
All right, is there any additional questions? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council? Okay, so this item has been moved.
In a second.
Been moved by Councilman Osborne and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Could we just get clarification on what exactly you're approving? Because it sounded like you wanted to...
Well, we want to...
Frank's staff, or Frank to verify the information we received from the vendor of that 5%. That's all. He's given authorization for the contract by council.
Okay.
But yeah, we just were asking that.
Yeah, we just want that. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the motion, though.
Regarding the extra costs.
Okay.
And if they don't, we'll bring that in back.
Couldn't FH&amp;H give us that information?
I would think so. I'll talk with the director tomorrow morning.
Very good. Okay, without any further discussion, would the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously with Mayor Pro Tim Reed absent.
Okay, thank you. Of course, we pulled for item number 16. We'll bring that back at a later council meeting. We're now on item 17. This is items from the council members in the governing board of the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Councilman Peckern?
I just attended one thing. That was a Halloween haunt. It was very well-attended. Staff did a great job again, and the haunted house was a bit scary, because Mayor Pro Tim, Dan Reed screamed, and Councilwoman Swor has had a little yell-out. That's it.
Is that right?
That was ahead of me.
They made me go first, to block all the surprises. But yes, the Halloween haunt, it was very fun. There was a good attendance, and kudos to staff for a great event. I also attended the South Bay City's Council of Government meeting last Thursday. Pretty light agenda, and as I mentioned earlier, we did have L.A. Impact come and give a presentation. It's a police task force focused on top crimes affecting L.A. County, so very interesting. A lot of us, it was our first time hearing about it, but they had some good stories, so I'll pass it along to my colleague.
Thank you.
Councilman Osborne.
Thank you. The only thing outside the city I attended was the SCAG event downtown L.A. last week, and it was somewhat alarming to see this report given by a professor in climate forecasting, I guess would have been his title, but he was Ph.D. in it, so. In any case, he was showing some worst-case scenarios of uncertain weather patterns that were predicted to continue throughout the region. And one of the colleagues asked, you know, it was a very doom and gloom report, to be honest, and one of the elects from another city, well, if this is the case, where would you recommend to move? And he didn't have much of an answer. He said, it's going to be pretty much nationwide. But that's all available online on the SCAG's website, the reports and everything, but interesting. And like Pat Burnett said, yeah, the Halloween haunt, I think it had more people than I'd seen in years past. It was packed, a lot of fun, good work on staff's part, putting it all together. I saw some scary pictures. I couldn't tell who was wearing the red wig, if that was you or Dan. There was some guy with makeup and a red wig.
I was it.
You were it? I thought so. And just a repeat announcement, our librarian announced a Veterans Day memorial that's coming up, and encourage anyone who has family members who ever served, or even friends, to consider purchasing a flag for the display out there. And that's all I got. Oh, and happy Thanksgiving's off in the future. We won't meet prior to that, so.
That's right.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilman. I did also attend the Halloween haunt. The haunted house this year was really good. It was...
Scary?
Yeah, it was really good. I mean, it was good last year, but it was really good. You can tell they put a lot of hours in to putting that haunted house together. That was, that was really good. Okay, I also attended, I did a site visit for a new business here in the city called Rock the, We Rock the Spectrum. It's a facility for families or children with autism, and they provide services for those families, a great service they provide. There's off of Redondo Beach Boulevard, so I attended a site visit there. Also attended a Longdale High School homecoming football game against El Segundo, and of course, as we should have, we came out victorious.
What was the score, Robert?
I don't even remember.
Forty-nine, fourteen.
It was so, it was so...
Forty-nine, fourteen.
Well, that's what I was going to say, was at some point, you just stopped taking school. You know, at some point, you know, but it was, it was a good game, and kids had a lot of fun there. And I'm also attending a coffee with a cop. I was there for at least an hour. Maybe an hour and 15 minutes, but I was there for at least an hour, so.
You said you made a...
You said you came in and you ran up.
Just wanted to break the show. By that time, I could have had at least three cups of coffee, had I not had coffee before. Actually, I brought my coffee with me, but that was, that was good. And I thank Jose in the library for hosting it for us, so that was good. Obviously, the sheriff and deputies did a great job. It seemed like I had something else. I think that's all I had from my end, so I will move our agenda. We've got a couple of closed sessions. We actually have, the Longdale City Council has a closed session, a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation in the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Also have a closed session conference regarding real property. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us a provision for which we will go in closed session under.
As the mayor suggested, there will be two closed sessions tonight. The first is the council will consider one matter of anticipated litigation, whether to initiate litigation in that one case. And the second item is the successor agency to discuss the property at the corner of Manhattan and Hawthorne Boulevard. Thank you.
Okay, okay, we stay in recess. Okay, okay, we stand in recess.